Yeah.
I don't go anywhere. It's not going to get down?
Yes.
Geez, we've only got past the first one.
Well, at least the room is clear. There can't be that many speakers for the next two.
Anyway, you were very correct. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm still saying it's 2:00 AM. I'm still saying it's 2:00 AM.
Just when you say there aren't a lot of speakers.
Yes. Yeah, you know, the famous last words.
Yeah, when I hired Ray Jones.
I saw that.
Shift into second gear.
It's a separate thing by itself. Who'd be out of control?
I'm gonna answer the phone. I'm gonna.
I don't know why, but. Somewhere I was contacted by another homeowner.
She called.
Unless it's like.
We're unable to take it. We're unable to do it.
Yeah, where did everybody go? We're gonna see what's here.
So, we're gonna go ahead and get started on the next item. It's a public hearing ordinance and resolution for the Flint Hill Plan Unit Development. And are you going through, are you gonna announce when you're at each park?
Yeah, so this is, this is gonna be. We're gonna have to work through this together. This is, this is a little interesting. And I don't think I introduced myself last time. I'm Matt Ophley, City Planner, Neighborhood Development Services. So, Mayor, City Council, tonight, you'll be reviewing a request for proposed development located around Flint Drive in Keene Court called Flint Hill PUD. The development includes three applications and may require a public hearing. The applications include a zoning application, a critical slope application, and a request to close streets. That is not an application. We'll get to that. Charlie Armstrong of Belmont Station LLC has submitted an application seeking a rezone, a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district classification of 13 parcels of land surrounding the unimproved streets of Flint Drive and Keene Court. The application proposes to change the zoning classification of the subject properties from R1S to PUD, subject to proffered development conditions. In addition, the proposed improvements associated with the rezoning will impact critical slopes on site. The development will allow up to 50 townhouses at an approximate density of five dwelling units per acre with the following proffered conditions. Density. The density shall not exceed a maximum of 50 residential units. New city park. Prior to project completion, the developer shall offer at no cost to the city approximately three acres of land to be added to the adjacent Longwood Park. Number three, affordable dwelling units. The developer shall cause a minimum of five affordable dwelling units to be built on site as defined in City Code 3412C and 3412G with affordability over a term of a minimum of 10 years. The ADUs, affordable dwelling units, requirement shall be recorded as deed restrictions on each ADU lot. During home construction, ADUs shall be provided incrementally such that at least one incremental ADU shall be under construction prior to the issuance of every 10th certificate of occupancy. As an alternative, the developer, building the ADUs. As, in proffer three above, the developer may deed the ADU lots to nonprofit affordable housing provider for construction by a nonprofit entity. If the required ADU lots are deeded to the nonprofit housing provider in accordance with the time specified in 3B above, then the transfer of the lot shall be deemed to have satisfied the timing requirement specified in 3B. The development will also include the following key features. Eight rows of townhomes, the general layout. A variety of housing sizes will be included as following. The development will primarily be single housing type to encourage density, but will promote inclusion of houses of a variety of sizes, architectural styles, and price points with variety in width and square footage, including some townhomes with rear alley-loaded garages. An architectural review board will be established by the Homeowners Association to create architectural style. 5.1 acres of open space depicted within the PUD development plan along with specified promises. The applicant is promising to reserve 60% of his existing tree stream sensitive topography on the site. The new dedication of parkland will account for approximately three acres of the 5.1 acres of open space. Sheltered five-foot sidewalks located along Keene Court and Flint Drive. Nature trails dedicated for public use within the development site to provide access to Longwood Park. On-street parking, parking generally located depicted within the PUD development plan. Rear-loading parking will be provided behind the townhomes constructed on Flint Drive. A teardrop layout of Keene Court. This layout is not an option under the current city standards within the Standards and Design Manual. A perimeter, a landscape plan promising the following key features, which would not otherwise be required by the city's standard landscape regulations. Preservation of wetlands and buffer along Tributary Stream 1 and 2 in Morse Creek. A use matrix that allows residential and related uses such as single-family attached townhouse, family day home, and residential treatment facility up to eight residents. Non-residential uses such as house of worship, ball fields, and swimming pools. The use measure prohibits such uses as multifamily apartments, nursing homes, animal shelters, and gas station. The PUD development plan is not phased and would be constructed as one, one phased unit. To develop the PUD as proposed, the applicant is also requesting a waiver from the Critical Slope Ordinance. Improvements related to the development that would impact critical slopes include portions of Lot 9 through 22, Lot 24, Lot 25, and Lot 31. Open space, future parkland, and parking on Flint Drive. In addition, the applicant is requesting City Council vacate the right-of-way of Flint Drive and Keene Court. This vacation is requested to facilitate the replating of Flint Drive and Keene Court to match the layout within the PUD development plan. Under the current procedure for consideration of application for street or alley closing, these two streets would not be considered for closing due to the scoring above 1.5 on the scoring rubric. The applicant is requesting City Council reconsider. We'll get into that. Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 14, 2019, and additional meeting on June 11, 2019. At these meetings, the commission discussed the stormwater design, affordability, impact on the school system, administration of the affordable dwelling unit proffer, and how it conflicts with the current city's policies. At that public hearing, seven members of the public spoke and expressed the following. The development will create more traffic and adversely impact the quality of life to existing residents. This area of the city lacks the infrastructure support such a large development. The proposed townhomes will not be affordable. The development could adversely impact schools. Sidewalks are not safe in this area and therefore not enough public transportation. The Fry Spring Neighborhood Association is neutral to the proposed rezoning, but any development should be well thought out. The development will be good for the area by adding additional housing. The Planning Commission voted 6-0 to recommend approval of the rezoning and critical slope waiver to City Council as one vote. The process, I want to defer to Mr. Blair on procedure as laid out in City Council memo before I, before I do that. There's a couple things staff wants to point out. One thing is, after the Planning Commission meeting on the 11th, the applicant did update one of their sheets in their PUD development plan. And this really relates to the critical slope and stormwater. So, the critical slope conditions that were passed stated that the water would be treated as per the design in the PUD development plan. And if you look at the original stormwater development attachments in your, in your packet, it's one that's. The original, it's in the packet. It basically talks about treating for all the stormwater on site. The updated plan would treat about 76% on site. And so, I just wanted City Council to be aware that this was updated after Planning Commission made the recommendation to y'all. With that, I'm gonna kind of, we're gonna kind of work through the process because I feel the first thing would be the, even though it doesn't sound like it, the first thing would be how City Council wants to handle the road closure. Because if City Council does not want to waive the new policy. The rest of it actually cannot go forward. Because the PUD development plan as designed in the layout. If you don't, if they can't, if you can't request waiving the streets, the PUD plan can't go forward. So, that's gonna be kind of, I believe, the first thing y'all kind of need to decide is if you want the applicant to follow the existing alley and street closure.
That we just approved.
That we just approved. If you do that, it's scored higher than the 1.5, so it can't come to you. But you, the applicant wrote a letter, which is in your packet, and we can kind of defer to legal. If you want to waive those requirements so that you can vacate the streets. That would, I think, be the first step.
That request came before we changed this policy?
The request did. While the policy was being written, the request did come in. The old alley and street closure process was very odd as far as you had to actually post on-site prior to submitting an application. So, I have documentation of them actually posting on-site, request to close it before they, I believe it was two weeks they have to do prior to even submitting an application. This is very different than I think what the streets and alley closure was envisioned. You know, it really wasn't envisioned to close a street just to replat it in a different, slightly different position. So, that would, I believe, be the first set of business to take care of because that's gonna kind of lead into whether y'all can really discuss the PUD or the critical slope.
So, we're going to get to the public hearing part until after?
No.
The public hearing would be because of the street closure.
Right. This is kind of the hurdle before you would get to consideration of the PUD and critical slope waiver. As, as Planner has indicated, the street closure policy that you approved a couple of months ago was more about actually closing a street or alley and, in effect, kind of extinguishing that idea. I think if you do want to go forward, you know, there's always the question of, well, are we setting a precedent if we move forward? Well, one thing to remember about a precedent is if you have a reason and a rational basis that this particular waiver would be different than future waivers, you're not setting a precedent. I think to Matt's point, the rational basis you could use if you want to grant the waiver is this isn't actually closing a street or an alley. It's, in effect, taking the same street and alley and replating it. Is that a fair statement?
It is, and I do think, and of course, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I do think Council would have the ability to condition the closure on the adoption of a new plat.
They could, yes. So, you would need a motion to waive the street closing polit, policy. And if you choose to condition that upon recrodation of a new plat, if you want to move forward with the, to hear the PUD and critical slope waiver policy.
Well, I just have a question, though, that, I mean, the way the streets configured is so tied to the way the lots are laid out, and then there's the, the building type, the single building type. So, I have problems with the whole design of that PUD, quite frankly. So, to me. This feels like the tail wagging the dog, but I'll just go along with everybody. I mean, I could go ahead and approve the street waiver, but that's not backing the end of proving anything else, right?
Oh, absolutely not.
All right, so it sounds like we're gonna move to approve the landlord's request for waiver to the city's streets and alleys' closing policy so that the new policy will not be applied to the proposed Flint Hill PUD.
And do you want to condition that upon a recrodation of, of the plat?
Yes, is that what you're talking about?
Would this, was this just the motion to hear it for the public hearing?
No, no, no. This would be actually waiving that street because they have to do that before they can even get to the public hearing.
Okay.
All right, I made a motion.
And is that, do you have that as a condition to replat?
Isn't that what we've just, yeah, that's the recommendation?
What was the feedback that they received from the signs that they put up? Did they include that?
There was, we received no feedback directly to the street closure. We did receive feedback to the PUD.
All right. All right, is there, so we have a second and then open the public hearing, or do we vote?
Or you would vote on that right now?
Okay.
And, and the reason I bring up the plating vice mayor hill is that as a condition of, what it, what it's saying is that as a condition of closing this street, the applicant will replat Flint and.
Keene.
Keene. As indicated in the PUD.
Then that would be what I'm suggesting in my motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
All right, please vote. All right, that carries four to one.
Okay, and now you can have the public hearing on.
On just the waiver of the street or the entire?
Or no, no, the, the PUD, the rezoning.
Don't, okay.
We, we did have a quorum when this was heard for rezoning.
Right.
That's why I was, I guess, a little confused on the public hearing, if it was for the street or for the.
No, no.
Well, we did notice it, right, again?
Yeah.
But this has a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, it didn't, I guess, I didn't, you didn't need to because three of us were there two months ago.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think the lot list is gonna be long.
Are there a list? Do I have it? Okay, is there anyone here who would like to speak on the proposed vacation of Keene Court and a portion of Flint Drive?
I guess we already did that.
Well, that's what it says. Anyone here to speak on the Flint Court Development? All right, closing public hearing? All right.
Okay, with, with that kind of out of the way, it's really hard, I think, for Council to break apart the critical slope and the PUD rezoning. I think the discussion, and as I said, the recommendation from Planning Commission came forward as one recommendation for approval of the PUD with the critical slope. Again, I want to just mention that, and it is in your packet, that that stormwater sheet has been updated as you have your deliberation. The applicant is here to answer questions. I don't believe he has a presentation.
Okay.
Do you?
You said he.
Yeah, you do.
Thanks, Matt. I'm Charlie Armstrong with Southern Development and Belmont Station LLC. It, it sounds like a complicated proposal because of the multiple layers of things involved, but really, it's, it's pretty simple. It's all the three items that are necessary to develop what we propose in the, in the drawing for the PUD. The critical slope portion of it is necessary in order to develop around the perimeter of the upland areas of the site so that we can preserve the lower areas of the site, which are at least five acres of sensitive areas along Morse Creek. We actually bought an extra parcel, a five-acre parcel, so that we could preserve those lowland areas along Morse Creek and donate those to the city. The street closure portion, and it's unfortunate that the policy is brand-new, but the portion of the project involving the street closure is really just to shift the existing right-of-ways a couple of feet. We don't want to close them. We want to build them. And so, it's just a technical mechanism to get there. So, the most important thing, I think, to know about this site is it's currently platted. It's as R1S land, as 13 existing large single-family lots. Some of them are as big as three-quarters of an acre in the middle of a developing area. They're platted in the 60s. I have a handout that I'd like to. I have a handout that I'd like to hand to y'all if I. By right development of this land and those 13 lots would use more land and provide less housing. It would also yield houses like other places we're seeing being developed around Fry Spring right now on some of those older by-right lots, that we're seeing prices around $500,000 for those houses. Rezoning to a PUD would allow townhome, smaller lot development at a price point that is more affordable. It would also provide some deed-restricted, affordable dwelling units. What has just been passed down, the green on the first page are the existing lots. And if you flip to the second page, the red, which is overlaid on the green, so you can see the comparison, is what would be proposed to be in lots. And you can see it uses less land, it disturbs fewer critical slopes, and really clusters more density up in that upland area, avoiding sensitive areas as much as we can. That city park donation along Morse Creek is important to us. It's a trail corridor that the city has been wanting for some time. Parks and Rec had approached the previous owners of that five-acre parcel, and they would not give an easement or sell it. We bought that five acres and want to donate the whole thing in fee simple to the city, so the city can have it as parks and trails. It's a very short distance from Jackson Via to Azalea Park by way of that creek. There's still two or three more landowners between this and Azalea Park. They would need trail easements, but this gets it about halfway there. So those are the highlights. Without going into too much detail, staff have told you, the stormwater management comment that came up, originally, staff had asked that 100% of all nutrients be treated on-site. We don't know that that is feasible. We don't want to promise something we don't know is absolutely doable. So what we are including in this plan is to treat as much as we can with reasonably commonly-used stormwater management methods. And if we have to, purchase credits for anything that we can't treat right there on-site. That coupled with the preservation of wetlands in the sensitive street areas, I think, provides a pretty compelling environmental case for this PUD. So kind of get to the summary. I think this is a rare opportunity to really benefit density, affordability, connectivity, environmental preservation, and expansion of city parkland, all in one proposal. It doesn't just kind of play lip service or chip around the edges at any of those. It really makes significant contributions to all of them. And the, the by-right development is feasible economically, and it's simple. It's platted lots. We would just need a road plan and site plan approval from the city, which is a by-right thing. But we don't think it's the best thing for the city. We don't think it's the best thing for this property. And so this is why we are putting this PUD forward. Planning Commission looked at this over the course of two meetings and voted unanimously to recommend approval to y'all. So that's my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions now or later if they come up from any of you.
So my concern is the affordability piece, the number of dwelling units and the number of years. And another major concern of mine is after watching both presentations to the Planning Commission, both times, your discussion revolves around what you can do by right. But it doesn't talk about making sure that you are, you know, doing what's in the best interest also of the community and how you weigh both of that. So it's almost as if you're saying, I can do something anyway, but. So if you do not approve this, then I'll do, and I especially heard that with the Mori Avenue discussion that you had too. And I would like for you in the future, maybe, to look at just the logic behind, behind that. If we are in a city with the affordable housing crisis, and just simply saying that you can do something regardless of whether we approve or not, isn't necessarily helping or coming to the table to assist in this crises that we have. So the 10-year period is one of the lowest, you know, in terms of number of years that, to maintain affordability. So I, for me, I would want you to look at that. And the five of 50 is something else that I would, if I were going to approve this, would want you to consider.
Thank you. Those are two important points, if you don't mind if I'll address those. I heard you at the Planning Commission meeting. And start with the by-right scenario, which is a real thing. I mean, it is. We bought this from another developer who had owned it for some time. And so somebody was going to do something. And I think it's worth highlighting that we didn't just go forward with the by-right. We, we came to you all to try to do something different. And we're asking for that permission to do something different than what the by-right allows us, or if we were to sell it, somebody else to do. But that's not what we want to do. I just want to make that very clear. If we have no other option, that is what somebody is going to build. Between the last two Planning Commission meetings, when, when that came up, we've, and, and prior, we'd been exploring ways to provide as much affordability on the site as we can. We have financial constraints that we have to pay attention to. And one of the things that enables a little more affordability to happen on this site than the last time you heard me speak was this stormwater thing, which in the past iteration put a very high barrier or high hurdle on us, that I didn't have any idea how much that would cost or what it would mean to implement, or if it would even mean that we would lose housing units and make the project less feasible. So all along the way, we've been talking to potential partners. And since I last spoke with you, we have signed agreement with Habitat for Humanity to do those units with them. So though we can't proffer more units, we can hit that very deep affordability that I was telling you I didn't think we could do without changing something else at the last meeting. That's important to us. We have a long history of working with them at other projects in the city, and we'd like that to continue, and we've got an agreement now where it can.
Any, are there any other questions?
I do. So a planned unit development, as I understand it, is supposed to be the developers getting a lot of latitude to do something really innovative and creative that kind of hits a lot of the, the goals of the community at once. And I've typically seen PUDs be the tool used to, say, implement a small area plan, something that was already a vision plan of the community. And this, this city, I've seen them just used for greenfield sites. They just go in, and the vision is clearly coming from the developer. But there are criteria in the planned unit development zoning ordinance itself that, that calls for things like a variety of housing types. It calls for innovation in, in park design, and it calls for, well, I think, Mr. Affley did a really good job of, of critiquing your application. And, and in many areas, it, it really isn't innovative. It, it really strikes me as almost being like you could have rezoned this to an R3, given the fact they were talking about R3 all the time. This is just a bunch of stick-built townhouses that are suburban in format. There's like, again, this one elevation where you don't have the, the garages in the front, so that they're not compromising the, kind of, the continuity of the sidewalks. But when you're in Keene Court, it, it'll, it'll feel like, to me, like Brookwood is, where you've got a lot of curb cuts coming out of, you know, lots of garage doors, and there's very few places on the street to park. And you've got a lot of ups and downs with the sidewalks, which is really not very good for people with disabilities. So why, was there any, ever thought of mixing up the type of units, the types of housing types? Because again, this is all going to be one price point, that I can see. There's not a mixture of affordability in it. But if you had, you know, towns with single-family, small lots mixed in with maybe multiplexes, was there ever any thought of even putting like a daycare facility in there so that it actually winds up feeling like it's an innovative place? Other than kind of just a particular kind of single-use, single-type zoning designation?
There was. Our takeaway from looking at this site was that it really wanted to be predominantly residential. We do have different sizes of homes in here, one being, you know, 30% larger than the other to hit different price points, plus the proffered ADU units. So that's really going to be three distinct price points. We went a different direction with innovation, rather than just architecture, and went toward like a five-acre park. Instead of coming in and, and looking at developing the whole site or a larger portion of the site, we thought that innovation was in the preservation. The architectural innovation that we do have in there is, is those rear alley-loaded units that you referenced. That pulls the units closer to the street. The issue of driveway curb cuts, though there are driveways that cross the sidewalk a lot of places there, there won't be the typical curb cut, because we're using a roll curb to keep the undulations from happening in the sidewalk, to keep that a pleasant walking experience. So, yeah, I, I hear your point. I, I don't think it's tremendous architectural ingenuity here. I don't think that's necessarily what this particular site wants. I think it wants innovation in other areas, like environmental preservation and preservation, or providing trails and pedestrian connectivity and things like that.
But there's no porch or patio life, there's no activation of the streets. I mean, that's public, private space that mediates between the home and the public street, so that people can actually enjoy.
Yeah, we haven't settled entirely on architectural product yet, but much of what we build does have that porch feel. And you've been through Burnett Commons and probably some of our other communities that do have those, those porches on the street. That's a pretty important aspect of what we do, especially in something like this that's designed around a, a central common, which we've done before too, where it really wants, neighbors want to have eyes out front. And you don't, we wouldn't design architectural product in here that turns its back on the street, because that's just, wouldn't feel right for a place that's designed around a central common like this. So yes, we will have that front porch feel. It's not proffered anywhere. But that's, that's what we like to do, and that's what we think will, will market well here.
My only other comment is the, so if you're saying that there wasn't, in terms of cost-benefit analysis, to increase the number of units, what prevented you from increasing the, the years, number of years that the units remained affordable? And in your contract with Habitat, does that mean those units will always remain as Habitat properties are within those income ranges?
So the, the years, it's, it's just a factor of uncertainty. Before we had a deal with Habitat to, to have them be the affordable housing provider here, if you look too far out, it's, it's assumed to need continual subsidy from the owner to keep it affordable. And having an owner promise to do that forever is a really difficult thing to proffer. That's why it's so beneficial to have a nonprofit like Habitat as the partner in this.
So Habitat properties are supposed to remain at the income range they're built at for, for the lifetime of the property?
Right.
And so that's not your intention?
It is.
It is.
It will fit, it will be part of their model. They don't, as far as I know, they don't do a different model.
They don't, okay. All right. So then that would change in the information that we were seeing? Because 10 years is still in there.
It's a minimum in the information you have. It will be longer with our agreement with Habitat. And we, we could change the proffer for second reading if that's something you all want, but we already have an agreement with them, so it doesn't matter to us.
And has this as a first reading? I mean, if, if that's the council's desire, and again, proffers are voluntary, but if the developer would agree to a longer term?
So, all right, so where, thank you.
Thanks.
So is there any further discussion for us? Intention moving forward? But there isn't a vote, but we need to know whether we intend to move forward with the.
I have a point of order about what we're, how we're doing this, because don't, so we're not doing motions at all in the first reading part? Like, what's our?
Well, I think, and the.
Do we use the mo, I mean, it's just a sense of the, because I, part of this is,
you can certainly take a poll to see among the members if you want this on the consent agenda next time, or it's a separate action item. But since this is the first reading, it has to come back to council. And so if it comes back to council and it's on the consent agenda when you approve the consent agenda, that would, in effect, be the motion and the approval.
But if there's not enough support for it, then it doesn't continue?
Well, I, I guess right now, this is the time for us to signal how, whether we support it or not. I personally don't think that, I think it's a missed opportunity with the planning and development. I don't think it's doing enough, and it's, I'm, I'm well aware of this site. I think it, it could have had a lot more variety of building types as, as required by the PUD ordinance. It, it is not a pedestrian-oriented environment. It's got a lot, a lot of conflict points and, between cars and pedestrians. And I just feel that when you're doing something that is really kind of the, the least transparent zoning tool we have. No one sees what a PUD looks like in our zoning ordinance. There's nothing on the maps that talk about what these things are. These, these are totally coming out of the applicant. And so to me, they need to be held to a very high bar, where they are meeting multiple goals at once. And not, not just density. Density does not necessarily mean affordable housing, and density certainly doesn't necessarily mean a, a high quality of life. So to get all of those features in place, it needs to be intentionally designed. And I just, I just see that this is a townhouse, suburban townhouse complex that, that is not taking advantage of the flexibility of a planning development in, in light of the goals of our conplaner.
All right. Counselor Sigler?
I think I'm fine supporting it. I mean, I'm curious where everybody else is. I hear those misgivings, but.
I'm, I was in favor of supporting it. I just really have apprehensions about the affordable housing piece. Just that for me is tough. I don't think it's being, kind of as Kathy said, excuse me, as Ms. Galvin alluded to, we're not maximizing what we can get out of it. Ms. Galvin alluded to, we're not maximizing what we can get out of it.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't have a strong feeling about this, honestly. For me, in this case, like I just, like Planning Commission approved it six to zero. We continue to hear about not having enough inventory of housing. That's probably the biggest thing weighing on me. I certainly hear, Ms. Galvin has a much greater background in, in the points that she's raised and so I certainly always, you know, look to her, her guidance on those. But I don't, I don't oppose it.
Based on the feedback, how about we put this as an action item on the next agenda so that you all can, if there is a, it certainly wouldn't go on consent.
So I think that's only two, unless...
Or...
No for me.
Huh?
No for me.
Okay. You oppose it?
Of course.
Okay. Oh, okay. And you do also?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, then it will, I would advise at this point to just take a vote then if there's opposition because there wouldn't be a second reading.
Okay. So is there a motion?
Thank you.
Would you entertain a deferral for me to come back with a stronger affordable housing proffer next time and see how you feel about that?
I'll be open to that.
And...
And I think maybe, so maybe some architectural revisions to address what Ms. Galvin was talking about. If it was, if it didn't increase the cost enough, whatever. I mean, those were serious misgivings.
So you were able to create a certain placement of building and orientation to the, to the green that you call with the, the townhomes on, I guess it was Flint Drive, if I get that right?
For the rear loaded?
Yeah.
That is on Flint.
That was on Flint. And, and that, and now that you, you're saying that Habitat is in the mix, and I know how you did Burnett Commons III, and that was a variety of different building types. It, it was a really rich environment for, for a mixture of income levels, a mixture of building types, and it was all very walkable. And, and it was a community. And this is, this looks like it's right now just going to be a drive-through. So, whatever you can do to make it more in keeping with some of the better development product, projects that we've had in the city, then I'd be inclined to look at as well. And the affordable housing issue, of course, is, is always ever-present. However, this is, it's, it's also a quality of life issue with the way this is laid out.
And the conversations about the park, the donation of the land for the park, how are those conversations going?
What, more specifically?
So is there a plan? Is there any information that you can share with us about what that is going to look like?
Yeah, there is, and it's in the PUD development plan. It's part of the packet. The primary goal of that park is environmental preservation. It's, it has some sensitive wetland areas, it has some critical slope areas, and it has the banks of Morse Creek on it. So, the goal is to tread pretty lightly in that park. So trails are about the only amenity that we envision there.
And that's what I was just asking.
Right.
So that wouldn't...
So that, that, thank you for bringing that up because that, that park is, that area that you're calling a park is just really not fully usable space as a, as a park. It's a trail area, but it's not what we would think of as a public park.
So that's what I'm saying, that doesn't get to what you're talking about with quality of life.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, that's true.
It's leftover space that you just can't build on.
It would be open to the public, but it, it's more of a greenway to get from point A to point B on a bike or on foot.
Right.
Right.
Okay. All right, so this is going to be deferred?
Deferred to the August agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have public hearing ordinance for 209 Maury Avenue rezoning, first of two readings.
Matt Oftley, City Planner, Neighborhood Development Services. Mayor City Council, tonight you'll be holding a public hearing. Request rezoning of 209 Maury Avenue and the surrounding five parcels. Charlie Armstrong, Southern Properties LLC is requesting zoning map amendment to rezone the subject properties from R2U to R3 multifamily with no proffers or development. On June 11th, 2019, the Planning Commission held a public hearing. No members of the public spoke in favor or opposition. To date, City Council has received several emails voicing concerns with the proposed rezoning. These concerns include protection of the Eugene Bradbury-designed home on the site. The rezoning would not align with the current comp plan land use map. During the Planning Commission discussion, the following was also brought up. Concern about the preservation of the existing home, rezoning the subject property to R2R3 for density could be increased, could provide more student housing closer to the university. This could pull some students out of other areas of the city and open up more housing stock. Concern about the rezoning the subject properties without a development plan to review. The Planning Commission also initiated a comprehensive planned land use map amendment to change the subject properties to high-density residential from the current low-density residential. Planning Commission voted four to two to recommend City Council approve the rezoning application. The applicant is here to speak prior to the public hearing.
All right. Welcome back.
Thank you. Again, Charlie Armstrong with Southern Development. This one's a bit simpler. And it, it's an interesting case for us because what we're suggesting for rezoning now was not what we originally intended when we got involved with this property. A couple of years ago, the previous owner of this property divided off three lots and offered them to us for sale. We bought those three lots, they zoned R2U, and our intent was to build three duplex units, a total of six units, on those three lots. A little while later, maybe a year later, the owner divided two more lots off, asking us if we wanted to buy those two. And we said, sure, we'd buy those two and we're going to continue with the same plan and put duplex units on those two lots as well. And the owner retained the manor house. And then a little while later, the owner sold us the manor house as well, and that kind of put this whole assemblage that had been broken apart into six separate lots, five of which were unbuilt, back into a 1.6-acre parcel. So the real question in our mind that came up then, we just, we decided to take a step back and say, wait, okay, now we, we have something different than what we originally thought we had. And is 10 or 12 duplex units the right use for the lots that are there for the property? And looking at it, the property has R3-zoned apartment property across Maury Avenue from it. It has University of Virginia dorms across Stadium Road from it. And diagonally across the intersection from the property is Scott Stadium itself. Behind this property, inside the rest of that block, ninety percent of the rest of that block are single-family houses that have been converted to student rentals. Only two of the houses on that whole block, out of twenty, or 21, appear to be owner-occupied now. The rest have out-of-town mailing addresses. And I can kind of put that into a visual for you if I, just show you this area where I highlighted the ones that, in red, that are out-of-town addresses and appear to be rentals. This is the property here. These are all rentals and these two greens appear to be owner-occupied. Rental apartments over here, Jefferson's College Building, UVA dorms here. So, this is another case of do we do what the existing lots that were originally sold to us, what we intended to do with those lots, or we try to do something different? On the property is the manor house. It's a Eugene Bradbury-designed house, dates to 1910. That will be saved. There is a perpetual deed restriction that was put on that property two owners ago to require preservation and good upkeep. The previous owner started some work to do that and we are starting more of that work right now. So rezoning to R3 would allow a fairly limited number of uses on the site. Multifamily residential is the most likely. That's what we would intend to do with it. It's a total of 33 units maximum. Given its location, it really wants to be student apartments. The benefit of student apartments here, right across the street from the university is it provides housing options for them that will keep the students from migrating out further into neighborhoods. Fry Spring, Venable have really suffered intense pressure from students moving into what were once single-family owner-occupied houses and kind of converting a neighborhood, which has happened here, all around this parcel. So providing housing options for them as close to the university in a denser situation really provides a lot of benefits to the city. It's walkable to everything university and everything in that area. And we feel strongly that if we're serious about adding density in appropriate places, this is an appropriate place to add that density. And once again, the PC recommended approval of this and I'm happy to answer questions.
The protection of the home, that is just a private agreement. There's nothing that the city can do to enforce that. Is that correct?
I don't know about enforcement, but that seems right. It's a restriction that, in my mind, is stronger than a proffer. A proffer, we could come to you five years from now and say, hey, this proffer isn't really working for us. Would you allow it to be changed? A deed restriction, just, we can't change it. You can't change it. So it, it is what it is.
We've had a lot of people asking specifically about if the city can enforce that deed restriction and my understanding from the city attorney that we could not. So I just wanted that on the public record.
Just a reminder of the Planning Commission discussion around their zoning text amendment. What was the end result, what was the outcome of that discussion?
So their recommendation was four to two to recommend rezoning. The...
But they had a stipulation they wanted to put in place, right? Did that, was there an outcome to that?
No, because it's a rezoning brought forward by the applicant, I mean, they, they couldn't negotiate proffers. There was concern during the Planning Commission about, the, the two biggest concerns I think that came up from the commissioners were there wasn't a plan to review. This was a straight rezoning. They're used to seeing a, an applicant come forward and say, I, I have a plan, but to make the plan work, I need this zoning. And this is not a, this is, that was a concern. And then the protection, the protection of the home was another big, I think, concern from some of the commissioners. But in their discussion, I think they, the thought of density, the thought of this being R3 closer to the university weighed out their concerns, at least for, for four of them.
Okay. But there was a discussion, what was Roy's discuss, he brought up a point at the end of that discussion. I'm just not remembering what. And they were talking about comprehensive zoning and...
They did kind of go into the comp plan. One of the things staff, we, we brought up was if, if they felt this was better as R3, we also suggested they initiate a comp plan amendment so that the underlying land use map matches that R3 because currently it's low-density.
Okay.
And so you, if...
And that was it?
Yeah, so if, and if this goes forward, that would be probably coming to City Council with your decision so that you could rezone it and also update the comp plan the same so you don't have this mismatch of a wanting higher density with an R3, but your, your underlying document being your land use map saying low-density.
I have a question. So why wasn't that done with the last project? Why, why didn't they want to then amend the comprehensive plan to look, reflect NCC?
So I, I think this has just been a, it's not happened a lot in the past and I think, you know, in a lot of communities you do kind of amend your comp plan as you do a rezoning. Staff's trying to encourage that. It's, it's a slow, a slow change.
That's like breaking the law first before you rewrite it.
Well...
Well, I mean, not, not...
Couple of points. Couple of points. One, to Mayor Walker's question. I believe that, is that comprehensive plan amendment going to be before the commission in July?
Correct, on July 9th.
And then to your question about the comp plan amendment as to the NCC, I think part of what's driving this comp plan, why you would have the comp plan amendment concurrent with this rezoning is that, that there are real questions in that area about density themselves, right? And, and the rezoning tonight earlier was about a commercial corridor. So if you tried to match comp plan to that, it really doesn't work in terms of matching the comp plan to the NCC zoning designation. You, you know, if that earlier one had been R3, and again, there were reasons there, it wasn't due to the zoning text, but if it had been R3, you might would say, let's have a comprehensive plan amendment just like this one to increase density on the land use map of the comp plan as well as the zoning, a map amendment.
But I just, I have a question and a process because my understanding is the comprehensive plan is the vision that has been put together by the community through an exhaustive process. So when you have any rezoning, it could be a special use permit, it could be to rezone to a PUD, it could be to change zoning from one category to another. The goal is to still be in keeping, in furthering to implement the comprehensive plan. This is backwards. This is your, you've changed your zoning and then you changed the comp plan to say it's a fait accompli. What, isn't the comp plan supposed to be something that guides the decision-making of your rezoning decision?
Couple of points. First, as to that, that statement. The comp plan in, it should guide zoning actions. Saying that, again, the comp plan is advisory. And one aspect about all of these debates that is sometimes lost is that, Virginia, you know, I, I can't as a citizen come before you and fill out a petition to say, I want you to change Chapter 15 of the City Code about parking. You know, I can't just submit my own amendment to your law. Zoning map amendments are enabled by the Code of Virginia, that they say that, that a developer can in fact come to you and ask for a zoning map amendment. And the Supreme Court has consistently held that even if a zoning does not correspond to the comp plan, that does not make it irrational or unreasonable.
Okay. And it just, it just was a little...
Sure. No, I understand what you're saying. And ideally, I think, we would agree if, if there's going to be a comp plan amendment, it probably should be coming at the same time as the zoning map amendment.
And I have the same, two concerns, I guess the Planning Commission had was just where, why isn't there at least something to kind of give us a sense for what this could look like? Because beyond just the preservation of the house through this deed restriction, I'm also curious how you're going to develop around that house. I mean, does that mean you could, you could actually attach to the house? I'm just trying to understand. It would just be helpful just to have at least a starting point visually. And I know it doesn't kind of require, I mean, we would still have to come back for a site plan review. I realize, I talked to Matt about it earlier... I talked to Matt about it earlier. It doesn't guarantee you're going to do that, but I just, I'm just trying to envision what you're envisioning, and I'm just not there yet.
It's a little bit of a catch-22 for us, because to do that, to come up with something that we could show you and say, this is what we want to build, involves an awful lot of money.
Yep.
And I don't know if you guys think this should be R3 or not. If you think this should be higher density residential, that's what we need to know now. If you think it should be R2, then that's different. And it can go back to what we had originally thought of for this site. But spending $100,000 on architecture to then come and ask that question is hard to stomach for us.
But isn't that the usual process?
Well, so there's a different usual process that I wish we had done as a city, and that is get our comp plan amendment done and get our zoning done. And so all of the draft comp plan maps that have been published but not adopted for this property showed as very high-intensity use. And that was the wording in those drafts. One higher than the other. But neither of those drafts showed anything lower density than what an R3 would permit. So we took cues from that, saying, okay, this is what the planning commission thinks, that it hasn't been adopted by council.
But that wasn't all the planning commission members? I mean...
Well, it doesn't matter. It's not an adopted document. Certainly, that's true. But the question was whether just to wait for that process for however long it's going to take and see, and then have guidance from that, or come to the planning commission independent of that process, and then come to you for that guidance.
So that's one of the challenges for me, that, you know, just asking us to potentially approve what we don't know, basically to save your company $100,000 is how it sounded to me. And then the rationale that if you build, students won't be in, you know, the neighborhoods that surround this property. That's not necessarily the case either. We have seen historically that students will move into any neighborhood that they can go into. And UVA is just now acknowledging that and, you know, having conversations around how they can help, you know, fix that problem. So that, it doesn't mean if this is approved that they won't move in to other parts of, you know, of the city either.
I mean, that's true. Certainly, we're not going to take all the students out of the other neighborhoods in the city. But those who live in multifamily housing here on this property we're talking about would not be living farther out into the neighborhoods. We're not attacking the entire problem. We're doing what we can with this piece of property. And really, what, the question in my mind is, absent other information, do you think this should be a higher-density parcel or not? That's the decision we have to make, and so we're asking you that question.
And personally, that's not my decision that I want to make. I mean, it's not about density per se. It's about the quality of the development project being put forth and whether it is in comportment with the vision of the community. And so right now, I'm feeling the, getting the sense that, yeah, there's been these future land use maps out there floating around that show different levels of intensity all over the city. And so it seems to be that now that's become an end in itself to just kind of parcel by parcel, developer by developer, to increase density in the city without any awareness of this seven to eight other components of the comprehensive plan, which have an awful lot to do with environmental sustainability and quality of life for human beings. So I want to ask that according to comprehensive, according to zoning amendments, the director of planning has the discretion to ask for a concept plan. Was that done? And if not, why wasn't it done? Because I have never been in a situation where I didn't have a concept plan to look at. And that's, and again, I've been here. It's going to be eight years by December.
I thought I had that emailed. Maybe Alex will stop in, but...
He's in the back, by the way.
Good evening, councilors. The, in terms of exercising the director's discretion, we didn't, because the applicant wanted to move forward with the request. And regardless of the fact that the director can exercise that discretion, the applicant can still choose, you know, to submit an application for rezoning, regardless of that. So we didn't request the applicant to provide information...
Excuse me, it says you could require it.
Because the applicant, that's correct. The applicant, as a matter of fact, didn't even know what he wanted to do with the, with the site. He felt that for him to propose anything tangible that he needs to be rezoned into R3, you know, to give him a better opportunity to make informed decisions in terms of what he was going to do. And then if council chooses to not approve that, and then the applicant will not proceed with the development. But he wanted to see if city council, planning commission and city council will approve the R3 for him to be able to decide what he was going to do with that particular site. And the planning commission did choose to go along with his proposal and then approve it by four votes to two.
All right. So is, are there any further questions?
We're public hearing, right?
Yeah. For, I'm just, all right. So I'll open the public hearing. And so Adrian Dent.
Hello. My name's Adrian Dent, and I live at 104 Todd Avenue in Fry Spring. This rezoning application represents a larger issue, and I ask that you consider the larger issue intertwined with the conversation of 209 Maury Avenue. My understanding is that rezoning from R2U to R3 is not in accordance with the current land use map created to guide city's decision-making. I recognize that in updating the 2013 comprehensive plan, the city initiated a process now currently in the RFP, or Request for Proposal Phase, to consult on strategy for increasing density and addressing the urgent demand for affordable housing. Establishing a new land use map is apparently to take years. Understandably, developers are keen to push for rezoning now. This 209 Maury Avenue rezoning application evidences the tension between anticipated but slowcoming change and the curiosity and eagerness of developers to test the limits in an ambiguous interim period. The question, will 209 Maury Avenue be rezoned, is also the question, will planning commission and ultimately city council use their authority, one subject property at a time, to grant rezoning applications and piece by piece to amend the land use map? Again, I ask that you consider the broader issue and the implications when approaching this rezoning application, and that your decision clarify your position in this uncertain space, a space ripe for inevitable boundary testing. Residents await comprehensively planned increased density. Additionally, lack of UVA student housing on campus negatively impacts the affordable housing market. In this specific location, higher density will more likely accommodate off-ground students than increased housing for city residents. Rezoning and subsequent new development must not continue to enable a university housing shortage. Will granting this rezoning application, unorthodox due to the fact that no site plan has been submitted, best serve the needs of your constituents? I am not convinced it will, and I ask you to deny the rezoning application. Thank you for your attention.
William Atwood.
I think this is the end of the long show.
Thanks.
Essentially, we met Jennifer and her sister Ginger, who grew up in this house. And they hired me, to be honest, because I was a good Democrat. I told them I was not a historian. I didn't preserve houses. But we designed a strategy to make the house worth more and parcel off the land. It's a good concept. So we put the house on a smaller piece. We subdivided the land. And the house, being on a $1.2 million track, $185,000, anybody was going to tear it down. Everybody tried. And they tore down the sister house across the street. And that's what upset these sisters, and they hired me. And we essentially now find a neighborhood that's, I would say, strange at best. We have an apartment complex across the street. It's about 60 years old. We actually have a park on the university side, because Edward Larry Barnes put the campus way up on the hill. I was there when he did it. I mean, essentially, it was a big fight, because he didn't want, he didn't want to be bricked. He left town very disillusioned. But fundamentally, there's still a park there. Jennifer played in that park. That whole neighborhood is very old, very established, very stable, very unnecessary for change, in my opinion. We support Charlie. Charlie's a guy that we have put all our faith in. We've had other people climb the ladder of R3. It's been difficult. But nobody's gone to city council and asked for just the zoning change. And in our experience, quite frankly, it's a difficult task. We would support a program of units. Parking is the big issue that would celebrate this building. As to the support from the city, the city can certainly do an IPP on this thing in a minute. And it probably should be, because we don't want to go to court to fight this thing. The city should take a stand, should have taken a stand on the other house. Two, I think, we would challenge Charlie to come and meet with us to create a strategy or a plan. Hell, we draw it. We pay for it. We corrected the title for him. It cost us 50 grand. I'll never buy an old piece of property again. But essentially, we're all for Charlie succeeding, but we want our house celebrated. We spent five years in this dilemma. And we're not going to give up now. Yes, I own the house, and I had to move out and had to sell it. Charlie was very good about that. But in fact, the house layout, specifically the lot that is the house, is very articulately laid out. If you've studied it, it's very, 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 very articulate. And you've seen it, I'm sure. Point being, that was for Charlie's townhouses. So essentially, we would certainly like to revisit it with Charlie. We would certainly like to create a scheme, but we'd like to see the house celebrated. It's a great house. It's been lived in the whole time. Not a piece of wood, and it's out of place. It's amazing. Thanks.
Anyone else here who would like to speak?
Who wants to speak?
All right, closing public hearing. Any further discussion, council?
No.
All right. So this is another one where I guess we need to figure out if there's support to move forward.
Yes, ma'am.
I just can't make a decision without a plan. I need, I need, I need to see something.
Even just something conceptually. I mean, I recognize there's different levels of planning. But I think for me, not understanding how the development would be relative to this property that's been spoken of, and also just, there's still seems to be public concern around how much we can enforce, you know, that this, this property, that this house will stay as intact and as it is. Those are two concerns, sound like the planning commission had too, so.
And our zoning ordinance says, with amendments, we can require a concept plan.
So you're feeling like we should have done that to begin with?
That's my view.
Okay. So...
I tend to, I tend to agree. I think that to make a decision on density just on its own, I don't, I don't know how to do that.
Counselor, follow me. Any day now.
I do agree. Like, this area, I can see ripe for R3. I'm not denying that this is going to, that would be a higher-density area of the community. I'm not...
But why would we be providing housing for students? That's the problem. This could be housing for UVA employees.
I don't know how, I don't know how we dictate that.
But that, without seeing the plan, without seeing what's going on, what kind of, what kind of product it is, so I mean, that's the thing.
I'm just saying, like, we're talking about, from a strictly density standpoint, if they're looking for a signal, I can, I can see that this would be an area that we would have a higher density than, you know, just single-family homes.
Okay. So, no comment? Do you have a comment? All right, all right. So it doesn't appear to...
Ma'am?
We're done? No, this, yeah. So I don't think there's support for this to move forward. I don't support. And then there's one no comment.
The planning pieces, I mean, I don't have, I'm kind of with Kathy. I don't have the plan. So it makes it tough.
All right. Thank you.
I have 10 more seconds.
We're, thank you.
Because it's midnight.
All right. So next, we have, so that's not moving.
Right, that, not move forward.
Okay. So we have an ordinance amend Section 2-6 of the Charlesville City Code, City Holidays, second of two readings.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. I want to walk through procedurally where this will go. At your last meeting, you had asked Dr. Richardson to talk to city employees about their thoughts on the proposed holiday. And as indicated in the agenda memo, they indicated that they would prefer a floating holiday. Is that, that's fair assumption? Yeah. And so that was the factual piece that you all asked to investigate. And so procedurally, at the last meeting, the council indicated that it would like to take two separate votes. One vote was the first ordinance in your packet, and that is to delete the 13th day of April as an official city holiday. The second portion is where Mayor Walker's original proposal, which is included, wanted to establish the third day of March as Freedom and Liberation Day, and have an additional fourth day of March as an additional city holiday. The council also discussed at that meeting possibly making just the third day of March an official city holiday and not the fourth day of March. Another option would be to pass a resolution which would, and I have drawn one up and can provide it to you, that would ask the city manager to establish a floating holiday. And so at this point, I think procedurally, the first thing would be to have a motion concerning the 13th day of April as a city holiday, and if the council desires to delete that from the city code. That'd be the first step to take.
Because all of these listed in the city code are those, the days that are actually off, and they're paid days off.
Correct. And, well, and I want to make this point clear, that in that Section 2-6 legal holidays, it is also, those are days the city has closed for business as well.
And that's by definition what legal holiday means?
Right, right. There's no city business conducted on those days.
Okay. All right. So there needs to be a motion for that.
For the 13th of April, yes.
And so this is the, this is the motion to delete the 13th of April?
As a city holiday, yes, ma'am.
So I'd like to make a motion to delete the...
So I'd like to make a motion to delete the 13th of April, Thomas Jefferson's birthday, from the city calendar.
Is there a second?
I have a second, yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? Please vote. Okay, that carries four to one.
Okay. And now procedurally, this is where the council needs to decide. There are really three possibilities. One would be to pass the ordinance, adding March 3rd as Liberation and Freedom Day, and March 4th as city holidays. A second option would be just to add March 3rd as Freedom and Liberation Day. And the third option would be a resolution asking the city manager to establish a floating holiday. So that's one of those three choices for the council.
If you make March 3rd the official holiday, well, what I would request from the council is that we also provide the employees with a floating holiday as well. Because if we're already taking away one holiday, that takes it down to 10 holidays. Plus, if you add, you know, the new holiday, and a floating holiday is really giving the employees 12 days.
Sure. And that's another option. If the council wants to make March 3rd by ordinance would be an official city holiday, and then a resolution asking the city manager to establish an additional floating holiday.
For whatever reason? Like, what would the floating holiday be for?
Floating holiday is a PTO, is a day off. It's not, it's because the city hall, the city hall is not closed.
They wouldn't be off during the same day.
Right. City Hall would not be closed on the floating holiday.
But when I was looking at, in terms of the separate issue of city employees and just kind of, you know, acknowledgement of their service and employment, looking, the county has 12 holidays that it, and this would give us the 12. So that was a separate issue that, when I discussed it, I brought in two days for the third and fourth. But that, that was what we discussed the last time.
I guess, I mean, the thing for me is that they're just, they're apples and oranges. So there's the one piece, which is about equity, and then the other piece about not having enough vacation time for employees. If that's a real issue, and we can knock them both out at the same time, it's just a totally, I didn't know that there was an imbalance at the county. If Dr. Richardson, you're saying that that's an issue, then, but they are different issues. So, and the floating, and then there's the public facing, like, I know I talked to a county supervisor, and they said that one of the reasons for them, that Thomas Jefferson was an issue, was they really were grappling with, like, shutting down the county office buildings, like, when people needed to get business done. So when you shut, so we're still only closing the building one day, and then we're talking about another vacation day.
Yes.
That they can take at their leisure.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion.
So wait, these are, those are two now motions we have to accomplish that?
Yes. If you wanted to do that, you would pass a motion to add March 3rd as Freedom and Liberation Day to the city ordinance. And then after that, you'd have a separate motion, resolution, to have Dr. Richardson add a separate floating holiday to the city personnel policies.
So I'd like to make a motion that the city formally adopt March 3rd as Freedom and Liberation Day?
Second.
Okay. Please vote. All right, that carries five to zero.
And I would like to make the motion to add the separate floating holiday to the city, what did we say, code? Is that what you said?
Personnel.
Personnel policy, sorry, city's personnel.
Do you want me to read, read what I've got?
Sorry, one more time.
Be it resolved by the council of the city of Charlottesville, Virginia, that the city manager has requested to amend the city's personnel policies and regulations to provide for a floating holiday for city employees.
So moved.
All right.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I just, I want to be crystal clear on this to the public, that the reason to do this is to establish parity with the county in terms of the number of vacation days that, or one reason to do this.
Well, they get 12. We want to get 12.
They get 12, well, 12.
Yes.
Previously, there was an imbalance. There was 11, so now we're getting 12.
But I just personally felt strongly that, when we were having this conversation the last time, that we give the opportunity for staff to weigh in on their preferences, and their preference was for a floating holiday, and this accomplishes that.
So two things. Staff, yeah, so we're paritying out the county. Okay.
And we're just taking better care of our...
Yeah, taking better care of employees, right.
That's, that's right, mayor.
All right, please vote. All right, that carries five to zero. All right. Next, we have the resolution, minority, minority business task force update. Dr. Bellamy, can we do six and seven? Do we have to do them separate?
We can do them together. My preference would be that we do them together.
Is that fine, Mr. Ford?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we're going to do the Minority Business Task Force update and the Racial Engagement and Equity Fund for Minority Business Program Resolution, first of one reading. Good morning.
Good morning.
Four minutes.
Good evening. My name is Holly Lee. I'm with the Office of Economic Development. Thank you all for having us this evening. We thought we would start with a very quick overview from staff regarding the work that we've accomplished over the last fiscal year in partnership with the Minority Business Task Force. Then we'll pass it over to Mr. Rec Lecount, who is on the Minority Business Task Force, to give some outcomes and the final recommendation from the task force. I'd also like to recognize Ms. Andrea Copeland-Woodset. She was in the back, and she's been here all evening. She's been with the task force since the initiation, over two years ago. And so we appreciate her commitment and her, you know, participation in all of this. So with that, I'm just going to provide a very quick overview of the business development aspects of what we've done. So the last fiscal year, we really spent a lot of time trying to brand the Minority Business Program and to create awareness in the community about the services and programming, the programming that we offer. We've done this a wide variety of ways, but we focused a lot on events and outreach, so making sure that people know that we have a program and what we, what we do. So we did our Women and Minority Business Expo in November, and so that had some really good outcomes, and we got a lot of people registered to become vendors with the city. And then some of those businesses are subsequently doing business with the city now. We've also done two Minority Business Breakfasts, one in the winter and one in the, in May of this year. And we're planning a summer social on July 10th in partnership with the Chamber Business Diversity Council. So all of those events have had very good attendance, and we want to continue to make sure that people know that we are here, that we have services, that we can help them start businesses and grow their businesses here in Charlottesville. We also, as you all know, came to you in February of 2019 with a request to create a business equity loan program, and we have done that successfully. And as a result, over the past few months, we have been able to give out almost, almost $70,000 to six businesses, minority-owned businesses in Charlottesville, to help them grow and expand their businesses in the city. And so that has been a great initiative. We've had a lot of support from the community, from city council, and we greatly appreciate that. So, and with that, I'm just going to hand it over to Jennifer Stephen-Hoffer to give some of the supplier diversity updates.
Counselors, mayor, we've made a lot of accomplishments over the last year. In January 2019, we brought Sarah Hawthorne on board as the Minority Business Procurement Coordinator. I do not want to steal her thunder, so I'm going to turn that over very quickly to her. We appreciate earlier in the year you approving the change to increase our small purchase threshold to $100,000. That has made a big difference in the program so far. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Sarah to share some successes.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I wanted to talk a little bit about the procurement minority business directory that I established earlier this year, created and launched in March of 2019. We pushed it out to staff and did some training in April as well. We've included some new language in our procurement forums to include the supplier diversity initiatives, so that when someone submits a bid or proposal, that they have that information. And we submitted a Help Desk ticket to the city IT department for the SAP program to track the minority-owned and women-owned businesses who are not yet certified. And we've also updated our website to include the supplier diversity and vendor resources so that the public has a, more access to it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm here to present the Minority Business Task Force Report for fiscal year 2019. In November 2017, city council appointed a five-member task force, the Minority Business Task Force, to accomplish the task defined in Attachment A. A city council resolution approved in June 19, 2017. Task one was to outline a strategy to increase the number and scale of minority-owned businesses contracting with the city. Task two was to develop a job description for the approved procurement position within 60 days from the date that council passed that one. And task three was work as an advisory task force with the approved procurement position. On July 2nd, 2018, the Minority Business Task Force provided an update to city council reporting the completion of tasks one and two, and requesting a resolution to continue as a task force to focus on the remaining task, task three, which is to serve as an advisory task force for the program. On July 2nd, 2018, city council approved the resolution included herein as Attachment B, to allow the continuance of the Minority Business Task Force to work as an advisory task force. The task force has shown promising success in those two years that highlights the need for its work to continue in a better-established position. The city saw a 52.3% increase in purchase order spending on certified minority-owned businesses from fiscal year 17 to 18, and a 159% increase from fiscal year 18 in 2019. Women-owned businesses' spending also increased over the same period, even as total spending declined by 12.1%. As such, the task force reports includes, the task force report includes our recommendation, which is that the Minority Business Task Force be moved from a task force model to a standing committee under the scope of the boards and commissions to work as an advisory task force with the city's finance, finance department, procurement, and risk management division, and Office of Economic Development. The proposed resolution is included herein as Attachment C.
Thank you.
Fantastic metrics.
Outstanding work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
To go along with that, just, just one point of emphasis. One way in order for us to continue to do this work is indeed, as was just alluded to, we want to make the task force, move the task force from being just a task force to an actually adopted committee, similar to what we have throughout the, throughout the city with our other boards and commissions. So I hope that council and my colleagues will be open to doing such, so that this body can have the latitude to continue to do the great work without a time period or a timestamp being placed on it.
So this is a motion for this resolution? Is that what we're looking for?
Yes. Yes.
All right. I move that we establish a Minority Business Commission.
Is there a resolution already in here?
Yes. Yes.
Attachment B?
C, if I'm not mistaken.
C, C, okay.
Am I allowed to second it?
Yes.
Oh, all right, cool, second.
All right. Any further questions? All right, please vote. All right, carries five to zero.
Crushing it now.
Yeah, outstanding.
I'm so pleased that you're keeping that day down.
There's a lot of work in it, man.
It's fantastic.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
You've kept so many staff up to that, just looking around this room.
I know, it's really late.
All right.
All right, next.
Yeah, we're doing this, the next one.
Yes, that's why I'm looking at you.
Oh, you want me to start it?
It's not that.
No.
It says you're the presenter.
We're here.
And then I'll just, do you want to present it, and then I'll just tag you?
Sure. So the next item on the agenda, everyone, we're discussing the Business Equity Fund. So the allocation of racial engagement and equity funds for the Minority Business Program, any amount of $35,000, $35,300, excuse me. These funds will come from the Equity Fund, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
And part of it goes into much of what we were describing. We initially allocated the funds in order for us to be able to grow the minority business population here in the area, in order for us to be able to provide these different opportunities. We need resources. And as we heard in the last report about a minute and a half ago, the great work that not only the task force, but the Office of Economic Development is doing, in order for us, again, to grow these kind of programs, they need resources. And they've been doing such a phenomenal job that the businesses have been using the resources. So again, if we want to sustain that, we need to continue to give them just a little bit more. I provided you all via email last month the breakdown in regards to how much money this would come out for the Equity Fund, how much would still be left, and it's not a significant amount. And I'm sure Ms. Lee can have some follow-up. I think that information is also in our packet. That was when I saw it. Yeah, there we go.
We've currently been funding everything with existing departmental funds and pulling from various places to try to get these programs off the ground and running. Aside from the $100,000 you all allocated for the Business Equity Fund, everything has been done either, you know, in-house, using, you know, towns that we have in-house or with, with funds, existing funds. So we really feel that in order to expand our programming and really promote this and get it to the next level, we have plans for Minority Business Week in September, which is super exciting. So with it being the first one, it will require us to do quite a bit of marketing, which we are working with our media outlets on partnerships, but there will be some cost involved with that. So just in anticipation of trying to, you know, again, increase awareness about the program, get the word out there about what we're doing, and have some really great programming to really, you know, solidify the program and add some substance to it, that's really where the request comes in.
And we're, question. I was just going to say, looking at it more sustainably, like, do you see that this is like, kind of, an opportunity just to kind of lay the foundation in that in future iterations, you're going to do this for the budget cycle? I'm just trying to understand how we're going to evaluate this moving forward.
That's exactly correct. We see this initial request as being sort of startup cost for the program. Again, we've done everything with existing funds, so really to insert that extra to allow us to create these new programs and do marketing. But then we would see, you know, in the future, potentially asking for funds during the budget cycle. Again, if we're able to do well with some of our events, I see us being able to have some private sector partners and also some bigger media sponsorship. So potentially, those costs would decrease over time. Piloting the programs that are mentioned in the program, in the memo, so the Go Startup Program, the Go Contracting Program, those would be, require a little bit more funding on the front end in order to create that model and lay the foundation. But then after the fact, we would have staff instructing the majority of that, so the costs would go down substantially.
Okay.
I have one question. So with regards to the Go Contractor, it's my understanding that Quentin Harrell has a program, the Heritage?
United Heritage Builders.
Yes.
Builders, are you in partnership with them?
Yeah, so I've actually spoken with Quentin about this, and he's really excited. So we see opportunities to leverage the expertise that he has through Heritage United Builders in the development of the curriculum and actually the instruction of it as well. So we're definitely looking to them to be partners. Obviously, our, our partners in the Division of Procurement and Risk Management have the expertise there as well for a lot of that contracting and pre-bid kind of information. And then we're working with the Chamber Business Diversity Council to identify other partners as well, so.
And Mr. Harrell is currently the president
Yes.
of the Chamber Diversity Business.
Oh, great. I didn't realize that.
Yeah, that just happened last week. So all these efforts are really being done in partnership with other agencies, organizations, cross-departmental. We're trying to pull from all the expertise that we have access to in order to leverage any dollars that you all are able to allocate.
Okay. All right, any further questions?
My only, I think everything you guys are doing is awesome, and I want to credit Dr. Bellamy with, with bringing, originating, and doing so much work to bring this. It's only a budgetary point, and there are two potentially future members of council in the chambers. And it's just, when we do off-budget cycle substantial appropriations of this, it creates a real problem. The point is that we do this, we do all the budget allocations at one time, so they can be in one pie. And there are only three, I'm trying to think back in the three years, like, there used to be a limit of, I think, $5,000 or whatever it was for the discretionary fund. We did three that I can remember. We did the Daughters of Zion Cemetery renovation, which was $80,000. And we did the TomTom, which was $25,000, I think. But we negotiated all this different stuff, where the city got all these tickets, and there was the Hometown Summit. And then we did the downtown business emergency allocation of '75, when they were pleading that they were in a real crisis. So if we're getting into a regular thing, and this is my misgiving about the Equity Fund, if you establish a million... if you establish a million dollars, it's kind of this rolling fund where, you know, what's to stop every meeting? There could be an allocation where you say, well, it's about equity, and a city agency says this is really important. It would create a real different tempo and a different politics around. And then you look at the rigor that we put, you know, the nonprofit applicants through, and it creates a real problem. So I think this is really good because of what you guys have done. But I felt the need to say this for, as a precedent, because we get into a thing where this is, and this is my misgiving about the equity fund. I would caution future councils against establishing, you know, a million or $2 million fund that can be tapped routinely for off-budget cycle allocation requests, because it can create a...
You lose fiscal discipline.
You lose all kinds of things. And it also creates a lot of, it puts everything during the year as opposed to during the budget cycle. With that all said, what you guys have done is magnificent. And I think that it looks like a very disciplined request with specific uses for all the funds, and I'm gonna support it.
I'll just say to that, just when you're talking about equity, everything, you know, that may be needed may not come up, you know, during the budget cycle. And so there may need, and this is a separate conversation, but there may need to be, you know, those type of allocations for things that haven't been, you know, necessarily dealt with in any way in the past, so.
I mean, it's up to the future council, because I'm not gonna be here for the next budget cycle. But if you're basically abandoning annual budgets or significantly eroding them for a fluid budget process, I'm not sure what that looks like. I don't think, because of emergency concerns, you just don't, that's not a best practice. You don't know how to use tax revenue then. You don't know how to do fiscal years. You don't know how to account to the public for, so, but I take your point. It's something that you guys are gonna have to deal with.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point. Now, I'm gonna make the motion, but I do think in response, I think council's points are valid. But I do also think that specifically for the public's information, we as a city haven't done a good job historically of addressing issues involving around equity and being specific and targeted in regards to how we address different populations. Because of such, which is the reason why we initially created the equity fund, there has to be some kind of stipulations and fluid, and a level of being fluid to address these inequities as they arrive. And I'm happy that we do have resources allocated to be able to address them as they arrive. And I will personally implore the future council to continue to be open to having resources allocated for when situations like this arise, because it would have been a detriment to the community if we did not have the equity fund initially. Our resources are already set aside when this idea initially came up. And if I'm not mistaken, February is when we got everything squared away. So to a certain extent, we were still in the budget. But what if this research that I was doing and working with the OED had came up in October? And when December came, that we said, hey, well, we really need to have these resources allocated, and we want to be able to help these businesses, we'd have had to wait until the next fiscal year. That would have had a negative impact, because we've seen the great work that they've been able to do just in the initial six months of 2019. So that's just my thoughts. But with that being said, I...
But the only one thing I'll add, though, is that there is an off-cycle budget request, because there's been things that I would consider equity-related that people have brought forward to me, but I really have encouraged them to go through the off-cycle requesting process, because it is a process and ultimately does come in front of council. But it does at least give staff the opportunity to kind of ensure that there are certain hurdles that are being met. And so I just think there is importance with process. But I agree that this is definitely a very strong thing coming in front of us. I just, I think it's important for us to encourage people to follow those processes so there is some accountability throughout the process.
Process is important, but if we become too rigid in process, we may miss out on opportunity.
I'm saying, off-cycle budget request allows you to kind of not be so rigid.
To make a motion.
Go ahead and make the motion, Mayor.
Twenty more minutes of discussion, please.
It's a good, it's a good discussion.
Yeah, it is. We can have it in August.
So I move that we pass a resolution
Thank you.
that the City Council of the City of Charlottesville will hereby give a sum of $35,300 to be allocated to, the resolution doesn't say exactly what.
The Racial Engagement and Equity Fund?
Well, I have a question, though, because it says it's the Strategic Initiatives account. I thought it was coming from the...
The equity fund is under that name as a council strategic initiative.
I thought we had two buckets.
Oh, it's just going to the Office of Economic Development. I'm sorry. So it's being appropriated from the Council Strategic Initiatives account in the General Fund to the City of Charlottesville Office of Economic Development.
Correct.
All right.
That's it.
Second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
I just thought we had two things. I thought we had a Strategic Initiatives account, and I thought we had an equity fund.
I just want to say thank you. You are the one office that always gets it done, on time and under budget. So I'm not afraid of allocating money to these guys. Excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a report on the home stay taxation and regulations in Airbnb.
My man Ty got the fresh haircut. I seen you. Hey, okay.
I saw that, Reed.
Madam Mayor, it's Dr. Richardson, members of council. Thanks for inviting us to the slumber party.
Good morning.
We appreciate it. Let's see, joining me, before I get started, joining me this evening is the Honorable Maggie Reagan, who's the Commissioner of Revenue from Stanton. She's a past president of our statewide association and served on a working group of various statewide stakeholders convened by the Housing Commission of the General Assembly to study Airbnb legislation. I've invited her here as a subject matter expert, and she actually stayed.
Megan, does your meetings in Stanton last this long?
They do not. But Todd said, get my parking valid.
After midnight, they just...
The garages are open. You don't even need to worry about it.
Also joining me, I've got my business tax supervisor, Brenda Thornton, my business tax auditor, Bob Rush, and Reed Broadhead has joined us from Neighborhood Development Services, in case you have any questions. I'm gonna cut this down a little bit, because most everything I've got to say was in your council packet.
But we don't want to leave till two, you have time.
Well, yeah, yeah. I do want to remind you before I start on this, Airbnb is one of probably hundreds of similar platforms. We end up talking a lot about them, because they have a fairly dominant market position, but they're not the only one out there. A little background on what's been going on in the Commonwealth with Airbnb. In the 2016 and 2017 sessions of the General Assembly, Airbnb spent significant energy and resources pushing legislation that would have essentially exempted it and its hosts from local regulatory and tax authority and given it an unfair advantage over its competitors in the areas of zoning, business license, and revenue compliance. Interestingly, it was argued by Airbnb at the time that it was not feasible for Airbnb to remit trust taxes on behalf of its host clients directly to Virginia's localities, despite at $30 billion being the highest valued hotel operator in the world. As an aside, you should know that all the other major hotel chains managed to report and remit trust taxes directly to the localities for the millions of transactions taking place in thousands of properties across the Commonwealth, all while maintaining auditable records in compliance with state code. And that's important. Thankfully, the measures put forward in '16 and '17 were soundly defeated, and the General Assembly instead affirmed localities' authority with respect to temporary lodging activity. As I said before, the General Assembly's deliberations included a year-long working group of various statewide stakeholders, which was convened by the Housing Commission for the purpose of studying the legislation. My colleague from Stanton, Maggie Reagan, represented the Commissioner of Revenue admirably. She's what I would consider a subject matter expert on this. You fast forward to 2018, Airbnb changed its tactics. Realizing that collecting and remitting taxes on behalf of its host clients in Virginia is likely a service amenity that many of those clients would appreciate, Airbnb began floating a proposal to local tax officials across the Commonwealth that would have it do exactly what it previously said it was not able to do, collect and remit taxes directly to localities on behalf of its hosts. Unfortunately, and that sounds great, unfortunately, the agreement offered by Airbnb comes with a number of significant strings attached that pose problems both legal and philosophical when it comes to fairness and uniformity. Presumably aware of these problems, Airbnb made its first outreach to localities where it suspected that tax officials might not have the staff and/or resources to adequately assess such activity on their own. Fortunately, only three localities out of the 189 in Virginia that collect lodging taxes have chosen to take a bite from this golden apple. Nevertheless, like the proverbial serpent in the garden, Airbnb has continued to tout this devil's bargain to its host constituents as the panacea for all their administrative headaches, and to paint any local tax official that refuses to sign on as somehow behind the times and/or opposed to technology. Which leaves me to defend my office's decision to turn down what some misinformed constituents wrongfully assume will be bags of cash falling from heaven. And now, about a week and a half ago, we learned of a new wrinkle in this saga. As a result of a recent U.S. Supreme Court ruling, the South Dakota v. Wayfair decision, which found that even though online marketplace facilitators may not have a physical presence in the state, in a state, they were found to have enough of a nexus to make them subject to state sales taxes. As a result, many online retailers, auction sites, and online marketplaces will soon be collecting and remitting sales tax to the Department of Taxation in Richmond and similar state agencies across the country. This will also be true for sites like Airbnb and VRBO for any transactions booked through those platforms. We've received a number of inquiries from very confused Airbnb hosts after they received a confusing letter from Airbnb informing them that it would begin paying their transient taxes to the state. There's no such thing as a state transient tax. What they meant was that the site would begin paying their state sales tax in conformity with the Wayfair decision. The Department of Taxation has been vague about the details on how this is gonna happen, how remittances might be audited, or how localities will be able to verify that their distributions from those remittances will be accurate. Suffice it to say that nobody knows what this is gonna look like. What we do know is at present, according to state law, an entity in San Francisco, California, with no physical presence in the state of Virginia does not have sightus to pay a local option tax in Charlottesville, Virginia. Period. Now, I've included in your documents, I'm not gonna read through the list of problems I have with this agreement. I can do it, but, you know, it'll take another 20 minutes. Suffice it to say, it's not that I'm, I read the progress today, and the article in the progress makes it sound like, you know, the mean old Mr. Commissioner is choosing not to take the, take the deal from Airbnb. It's not that I'm choosing not to take it. I don't believe legally I can sign that deal. I think it sets up a certain class of taxpayer operating under rules that don't apply to everybody else. So I don't think we can do it. Why we should continue doing what we're doing, because we're doing a good job. The notion that Charlottesville should even consider entering into a collection agreement with Airbnb is predicated on two incorrect assumptions. Number one, that there's currently a proliferation of untaxed home stays in Charlottesville. And number two, that every instance of home stay activity should be subject to taxation, no matter how insignificant. I'll address the former by simply saying that my office does a very good job of discovering and taxing home stay activity. To the tune of over $1 million in transient occupancy tax since we created a separate license category only a few years ago. $360,000 in the last calendar year. We currently have in the neighborhood of 250 such enterprises in our tax system. These are hosts who engage in the activity on an ongoing basis and/or with some regularity. Now, you're gonna hear vague estimates from Airbnb and other sources that there are anywhere from a few hundred to up to 1,000 Airbnbs in the Charlottesville area. These are extremely misleading, because they invariably include surrounding counties in their estimates. They also include listings that are not active and host activity that would be considered de minimis by taxation standards. In other words, a host offering their house once or twice a year for graduation weekend or when they go on vacation themselves does not rise to the level of a taxable activity, even though that type of activity may in fact be the most common in the city. Further obscuring the truth is the fact that Airbnb steadfastly refuses to share the locations or frequency of activity with its localities, all of which reinforces my earlier point about Airbnb, well, I didn't make the point, because I skipped that part, but they don't know where our jurisdictional boundaries are either. They won't be able to make the distributions correctly. Currently, we use a third-party consultant who several times a year is able to generate a list of Airbnb postings linked to city addresses that have been cross-referenced against our population of existing licensed home stays. From there, we reach out to the home owners ourselves to bring them into compliance. We escalate our contact efforts depending on a homeowner's responsiveness. If necessary, we have them served with a summons by a sheriff's deputy, which works quite well. As you're probably aware, a host listing their home on Airbnb with any regularity needs a home stay permit from NDS, a business license from us, and will need to start remitting transient occupancy tax on a monthly basis. When compared to the requirements placed on every other type of business enterprise in the city, these obligations are not onerous. We offer online payment of the transient occupancy tax. Our instructions are clear and readily accessible for anyone who takes the time to look, and we are very easy to contact and work with. If there is one aspect of the current process that I would encourage you to change, it would be to eliminate the requirement to annually refile and pay the $100 home stay permit. This expansion requirement is out of line with other home occupation permits where a one-time form and payment are required. And I asked Reed, if you had questions about that, that's why I asked Reed to be here. I can go into a litany of reasons why I'm uncomfortable entering into any agreement with Airbnb. They've got a checkered history, to say the least. I can go into that. It's in your documents. I don't think I need to. Moving forward, the first thing we need to do is find out how the state will be handling the sales tax piece. How transparent will it be? How will localities verify the accuracy of their distributions? We've inquired through a number of channels and have been told that much of those details remain to be worked out. I promise I will let you guys know when I know. I cannot sign the deal with Airbnb without violating state code. It is as simple as that. If Airbnb were willing to modify the deal to guarantee transparency and put its hosts on a level playing field with every other lodging taxpayer in the city in terms of transparency and accountability, which it could, we might be able to come to an agreement. Richmond can write its own rules when it comes to sales tax. I cannot do that with local lodging tax, and you guys can't do it either. In the meantime, we intend to continue doing our job in a fair, responsible manner as prescribed by state code. And I'm happy to answer questions.
I'm just curious. Very direct. So Airbnb is just one of those that we interface with?
There's hundreds of them.
How many do we think that we interface with as a city of Charlottesville?
There's not, I mean, they, Airbnb and VRBO are easily 50% of the market. You know, the others are, nobody else probably accounts for more than 10%.
But you, even if we were to pursue this path with all those other hurdles, you'd only be getting a portion of it.
You'd only be getting a portion of it. And then I've still gotta go, I've still gotta go get it from everybody else who's not doing it on Airbnb.
So this is a consistent process across all?
Yeah, keep in mind that people are not just doing it on Airbnb. They're advertising on a number of platforms. So if we take, if we take, you know, the golden apple from Airbnb, you know, we still gotta go chase the others.
And in terms of eliminating the fee, I hear that as a recommendation, but I don't necessarily...
The reason I recommend that is we see what we end up finding and seeing is that it's actually sort of a disincentive to people to come in. No other, no other home occupation permit, if you want to cut hair at home, if you want to do anything at home, it's a one-time home occupation permit, a one-time fee. This one, you've got to do it over and over and over every year, and it's $100 a pop, and it's just out of line. And I think it actually discourages folks from, from coming in.
But when you send the sheriff after them, right?
Well, I mean, but that's just for my piece. That's, I'm going after them for taxes, okay? The home stay piece, that's Reed's side, you know, that's... The, the, the homestay piece, that's, that's Reed's side, you know, that's, that's the zoning piece. It works best when we're, you know, when we're working together.
Yeah.
But, you know, that $100 every year, when a business license is 35 bucks usually.
I would agree. I mean, a few years ago, the State Corporation Commission implemented, like, you used to have to do, I think, 35 or 50 dollars to start an LLC, and then they made it an annual thing, whereas, and it's incredibly, I mean, the paperwork, the hassle, they just, it, it's.
And as a consequence, you see a lot of LLCs just kind of, they don't do the paperwork, they don't pay the money, you know they're still in business.
Right.
But, but they've, they've lapsed or.
I, I think that would be a great thing to bring up.
But we would be in the same position, right? We would get the money from the individuals. So how much money are we talking about?
Oh, we've had 275 applications since the inception, so 275 times on hundred dollars, so 275.
Twenty-seven.
But, I mean, you're also finding, well, what we're seeing is, you know, I, I don't, I haven't asked these people, but I'm pretty sure they're not coming in the second year and ponying up the, you know, the $100 the second, third year.
Yeah, the first two years, we didn't do it right away because we rolled it out slowly. But, so, it would, it would, and, and they, they might not all be active people, so we might be sending applications out to all 275 people, and the next year only maybe 90 will register. It might be a cat and mouse kind of game, because then Todd will have people that will go online and discover, whoa, actually, those people are running, we'll have to check with me and see if that person's still active. So it might be, it might be better not to require them to re-register every single year.
Yeah, I think if you get them, if you get them in there the first time, they're obviously serious about it, they're trying to do the right thing to make them come back year after year after year just to say, you know, give us another 100 bucks, it feels punitive.
But we're also talking about housing that's not going towards rentals, right? Because they can do what they want to do with their property.
Well, I'm not, I'm not advocating, you know, that they, that they don't have to have the homestay. I mean, they have to get it, you know, at least once, and they have to be in compliance with it. And then if there's a complaint, let's say two, three years down the road, Reed's guys would still investigate.
We don't get very many complaints, maybe once a month. I agree with the housing part, but that's another, I think more also the accessory apartments that are being used for Airbnb as opposed for affordable units.
Yeah, I just think I would want to have a discussion, further discussion about before we made a decision to pull.
That's, that's fair, I just wanted to bring it up, it's, we've been thinking about it for a while, I just kind of wanted to get it on the table.
Okay, okay.
Is that fine?
Sure.
Okay.
Wake up now.
I'm just like, probably not our next meeting, let's just, I just want to give a step, it doesn't have to be our next meeting, though, okay? Because I just feel like we start to like throw these things, and that's how we get 12 item agendas.
We have, we know that it's a, it's up in the air.
Right, but, so you know, I, my, my intention is to go forward doing what we're doing.
Already, which is doing a great job.
With respect to Airbnb, thank you.
As he said about himself.
On time and under budget.
Keep on writing such powerful.
Yes, we have to bring you in.
You want that designation.
Every other meeting.
Would anyone else that came with you like to speak?
She's, she's been here all night.
I was going to say, like, is that?
Please, yeah, thank you for coming.
Moral support mostly.
I would just like to add that that was after I asked him to tone it down.
Believe me, I'm aware.
He makes some great points, and, and we really do, as an association, we have a sub, subcommittee that is following this issue. We continue as it develops through the sales tax purpose and also with transient occupancy tax. We're trying to do the best we can for our localities, for the people who want to be in this business, be fair to everybody and be consistent without being controlled by outside entities. So we're going to maintain on that track.
Thank you very much.
You gave him a lot of credibility tonight, so thank you for coming.
That, that helps, Todd.
Have a good morning.
Good night, thank you all for coming.
All right, next we have the Jefferson area bike and pedestrian plan update.
Madam Mayor, council members, good to see everybody. I'm gonna, I can do it, I'm going to try to, to run through this very quickly, not get into every single bike pad and sidewalk and walking path that we have throughout the, the city and county. But again, thank, thank you for allowing me and Peter Krebs with Piedmont Environmental Council to be here tonight to brief you on the recently completed regional bike and pedestrian plan. We're very excited not only for the completed plan between the different jurisdictions within our region, but most importantly for the renewed and engaged public input toward bicycle The last regional bike pedestrian plan was completed by the PDC in 2004. During recent long-range transportation planning by the MPO and a recently completed Bike Route 76 study, the community made it overwhelmingly clear how important it was for a unified effort to plan and implement connecting bike routes between our communities. In 2017, the PDC and Piedmont Environmental Council partnered with the Charlottesville Area Community Foundation and received funding from the foundation to develop such a plan and to increase community engagement opportunities in doing so. The end goal being not just to develop a plan, but to develop a movement to promote bike and pedestrian use. The vision of the new plan is to bring together multiple planning efforts, City of Charlottesville, Albemarle County, and University of Virginia, and provide unified guide for implementation of a bike and pedestrian plan. Tonight, Peter and I would like to just touch on a few of the benefits and observations from the plan and to ask your support in having this plan considered in your comprehensive planning efforts that you're undergoing now. If you have any specific questions as far as the bike and pedestrian routes, then Peter could answer those for you with a lot more specificity. CACF and Piedmont Environmental Council were instrumental in raising the bar for community engagement for development of this plan. Two nationally-known speakers came to town to not only speak to stakeholders, but to offer suggestions towards our common goals. In addition to reaching hundreds through in-person meetings, a survey was completed with an over 850 response rate. Stakeholders, citizens, and surveys had common interests toward a more connected network, trying to close gaps in infrastructure at jurisdictional boundaries and the need for coordinated partnerships on these projects. The plan identified that there is a gap between the communities and planning and available information. This is why the next project for the PDC and the communities is to undertake what we're calling a One Map Project depicting all existing bike and pedestrian infrastructure along with future plans in an easily accessible format, and which also would be in support of your climate action that you approved tonight, where the future One Man, One Map Project will begin to quantify environmental improvements for the bike and pedestrian improvements. The goals identified in the plan focus the plan on regional networks, includes both own road and separated paths. The process to prioritize improvements included easily identified historical corridors of roadways and other bike paths and revised as the citizens commented, or as citizens' comments were received and considered. The plan also includes an interactive map that shows all current and future planned The planning committee that directed this work used what's called an Active Trans Priority Tool as the initial prioritization of projects, using the categories of destinations, equity, conditional improvements, connectivity, and demand, and use of the tool's prioritization was then revised and refined by citizen input. In the rural areas of Albemarle County and beyond, previous plans were reviewed. A BIcap called Strava, which records rider use, was utilized, and then state agency and stakeholder input was used to provide the initial prioritization before then citizens' comments were taken into account. The plan is very, is a very inclusive strategy to prioritize, cooperate, and fund projects that provide the greatest combined potential use. Upon completion, the document has been adopted by the MPO last February, it was adopted by the Thomas Jefferson Planning District in March, and it will be considered by the Albemarle County Board of Supervisors this coming Wednesday. Once accepted by the community partners, we will then continue to work to ensure the projects are incorporated into all the future relevant plans for the county, city of Charlottesville, and UVA, and that citizen involvement will remain part of the process for all future development. We hope that this plan will be considered by you and your staff in your upcoming comp plan. And either I or Peter will be glad to answer any specific questions that you might have.
Earlier, I'm sorry, it was a while ago now during your three minutes, you were referencing some investments by the county. Could you just put that into context with what we've just seen to help me understand and what, what you might be seeking from us in the future? What we all are really seeking from us, it's just a matter of prioritization.
Okay, so, it, it's not for me to talk about where the Board of Supervisors is going in the future or what their intentionality might be, but some of the specific items that I mentioned is, their next budget has $6 million for bicycle pedestrian quality of life improvements, that I think their idea is to use those on corridor improvements like Avon or Riot Road. Then there's another tranche of money where they're using economic development funds for connectivity projects. So the most famous example that, or the one people are talking about, is the pedestrian bridge over Morris Creek, that's part of the, the Woolen Mills Willow Tree Development Project. Another tranche that I was alluding to is they had previously allocated money for Hetrow Park, which is in the rural area. And, and this budget cycle, they've moved that over to the Biscuit Run Park and getting that more connected. And then finally, they're hiring two new connectivity-related staff people. One will be a Greenways Planner, similar to, I guess, Chris Ginsick, and they're also adding a, a, a maintenance manager. So in reference to what we're thinking about for city council next year, I should pause and say that, that this is a, a large chunk that's a bit like an avalanche, and, and because they, they haven't traditionally funded this type of infrastructure, so they're, they're kind of catching up. Whereas over the years, city, the city has done bit by bit, project by project.
That's when my antenna went up, I was like, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a lot, yeah.
Yeah, so it, it is significant. As far as the city and, and the next round, there, there are projects on the horizon, again incrementally. The, the Morris Creek watershed, there's been talk about that at the MPO, that's one example. The Sunset Bridge Connector.
Right. I know those conversations happen there, I just know that during our last meeting with the Board of Supervisors, we looked at a number of different areas throughout the region, and I think it's helpful to have voices like yours to help us connect ourselves with the county. Are there projects that literally are like county to city that we want to make sure that we both are kind of working hand in hand, whether it's even for applying for grants or what other opportunities?
Absolutely.
Sometimes we just don't have those communication streams, so if you can help us to manage through that as we prioritize.
Yes, and, and.
And we bags, they have two, right?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I like to cover all the bases.
And, and that, that was going to be exactly my next point, and this is something that's really good from where I sit, seeing the staff of the city and the staff of the county working really well together. It, it's always good when they're colleagues, but it's better when they sit down and say, what are you doing, what are, what am I doing, what are we doing together? And having the TJ PDC enter the fray provides a sort of table for them to sit around, that's, that's been very helpful.
Nice.
Yeah.
All right, so there isn't any action tonight?
I'm just looking at these next steps you have.
But you wanted us to append this to our comp plan?
To review it.
We're, we're just asking that as staff is continuing with your comp plan work.
Okay.
Making sure, and I mean, there's no question, they're, they're doing that anyway.
Got it.
But, but just so long as they have the support of council, that's all.
I mean, thank you for the, the good work so far.
Is there any big ticket items that you're seeing, though, from a capital standpoint that the city council should be thinking about?
Well, the.
Chip's ready.
Right, yes, so VDOT's doing a feasibility study, looking at possible locations for a Riot River crossing. Also, VDOT is, is looking at making Route 20 south of town safe for pedestrians. I, I don't think that will be a huge ticket item for the city. And then, as you've been hearing about, the Morris Creek, the Sunset Avenue, that suite of projects, I think that's what's next. And what we're already doing along Hydralisk is about to, Hydralisk and 250, that's about to touch into Black County as well.
Okay.
Great.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Sorry for the hour.
Good morning, good morning.
Sleep well.
Next we have the Vinegar Hill Parks and Enslaved Auction Block update.
Oh, Chip.
Huh?
He's going to stay.
I thought you said the other.
I said, oh, Chip. I did not.
It's a lie, lie.
Just like, whoa, it's way too late.
I would not.
It did seem out of character.
Yes. I was looking at Chip. Now I'm going to look at Jeff.
Sorry, I don't have the southern accent, not even close. I'm sorry, I'm tired, I know you all are tired, so, but Jeff Moore, Preservation and Design Planner, no longer saying the new Mary Joy, I accept that I, I am.
You're here.
I'm here. Couple things that, I know the, the title was the Vinegar Hill Park and the Slave Auction Block, but there's a couple things in, in hopefully what you saw in the report, so, but quickly, where we are, as you know, Vinegar Hill Park is that area of the mall between, well, will be the Code Building and the Omni, as it goes up towards Water Street, that was established in 2016 by an act of, of council. And $15,000 was allocated for some markers, interpretive signs, et cetera. And as construction of the Code Building loomed, that all got set aside, and the Historic Resources Committee had a discussion, we've got to do something. And so, an idea came up to do a series of posters on the construction barricade. This is an example of one of them, I think we have seven, and that's the actual size, and they'll go on that green fence. And so, it's, as with any group project, it's been, it's taken a while to come to, to agreement on all the texts, but I think we've got, we've got a series of posters that gives some folks something to think about. And we've also been allowing ourselves to, to add, you know, an update occasionally. I know we want to get a little bit more into the Irish history, a lot of folks have been asking about that, and also to, to express to people what, what's coming when the Code And also to express to people what's coming when the Code Building is finished and that wall comes down. So that's the update on Vinegar Hill Park quickly. Second piece, we've been working on, and to my understanding, for some time, the Historic Resources Committee has been working on updating the markers located Court Square. And there are nine of them that, some of you probably seen are those black granite pieces or actually probably pieces of marble on the side of the walls that you can hardly read. And so they're working towards something like this, which is a piece of aluminum with a, I'm not sure exactly the surface that's on it, but these, we've been working on the text as long as I've been with the group.
And then some.
Yeah, and then some. And I'm hoping that we can, there's still three markers where, ongoing discussion about how to properly contextualize a few things. We're hoping to wrap that up, I'd like to say by the end of the year. And with that, then there's also the slave auction block plaque that's in the sidewalk. And we haven't worked on that. I don't know, that was, somebody had asked me about that, but we haven't been given any direction to do anything with that. So that's, I guess, the last piece is if you all have something in mind or have...
Well, when the media asked me about this, and I realized when I read that, that there hadn't been direction, it was confusing to me because I know that definitely on two different occasions, Councilor Galvin has expressed interest in us separating that from the more broader redesign of the parks, so that we could see the slave option block and making that more of a prominent.
Oh, yeah.
Because originally, before we got involved with all the court litigation, we had approved a redesign of the city parks. And that was, that was going to be inclusive of the Court Square precinct and also the area around East Market Park. But, and that included the slave block. But then as it got stymied, and then we decided to try to break it up, in fact, that's the Equal Justice Initiative, got broken out of that to do what we could do independent of the court case. So, and then, and actually, when we had the presentation with Andrea Doug, Dr. Douglas and Siri Russell onsite, Mayor Walker and I were there with Diantha McKeel and Norman Dill, I got the impression that there was work going on.
They are. I just learned today that there's a mark going up because I've noticed the post when I'm walking in.
Okay, this is for the slave block?
No, this is on the county across the street.
Oh, this is for the EJI.
Yes, yeah. And Siri sent me a note today about that, so I'm not sure what the dates are on that. I know it's soon.
That's still separate from this.
Yeah, but I'm not...
That's still separate, but there was talk that it would be good to, it's not too far away from that to actually...
I'm not, and I'm very honest, I haven't been involved in any of that. I have picked up, when I came in and sat down with the Historic Resources Committee, where are we? And it was, finish the Court Square markers that we'd been working on. And Vinegar Hill Park, those were the two things. So I could say we haven't done anything. That's not that they don't want to. I can't, I have to go back and have discussion with them about what, you know, as a committee there, we can tackle. And, but I also spoke with Charlene Green about this because she and I have been working on a lot of things together. And I asked her, I think it was in February, I said, what's the situation with the slave auction block? I know folks ask me about that. And I had the Blue Ribbon Commission marker on the desk in front of me. And she said, well, let's talk about this whole report. And so it was a very good point. But, so what the Blue Ribbon Commission, you know, recommended is some things on, I mean, one of them, I think there's 10 or 13 recommendations. So one of them is the slave auction block. And it says, you know, one could be a memorial, one could be just a different plaque. So I sort of said, I'm open, I'm all ears, but I am not aware of...
I think we wanted a plaque at this point, just because it needs to be identified.
What does?
The slave block. Just a larger, more prominent.
It's not...
Not just what's currently in the ground.
See, I'm in favor of us having, amending a block and putting up a plaque. But I do think this is an opportunity for us also, like, for us to put up a monument or something similar to what we saw at EJI.
Yeah.
One of the more powerful things at EJI down in Montgomery was having the actual representation of the slaves and the breaking of the chains or the mothers with their children. I think if we want to be bold in some regard and truly start to tell this full story, we can put up something like that, or we can put up something of triumph, which would kind of be my preference, in which we show, I think Councilor Signess said this a couple years ago, like, he had an idea about having a depiction of the Charlottesville 12. Do you remember that? We've had so many talks. Yeah, I mean, like...
There was the uplift of current victories and then the tragedy of the past.
Right. Yeah, sorry.
That was the idea.
Are you all instructing me to, to work with Historic Resources Committee to design a monument? I'm not...
Actually, I think when, it's almost one o'clock in the morning. I think right now, making decisions is going to be a little challenging. I was just thinking that the near-term immediate goal is to make that slave block more prominent and more noticeable, and a marker is almost like essential right away. And they're going to be putting a marker for the EJI first.
On the courthouse.
Monument's not coming for quite some time. So, just, could we start this by just having a conversation with Dr. Douglas to see where they are with the process? And then we can get them both to come back to see what...
I think that makes a lot of sense.
As possible.
I agree. It seems like, it seems like, it seems like you could, I mean, I think everybody doesn't like the thing in the sidewalk. Nobody. And everybody has wanted that to change. That was what was clear, was having it be that effaced and that. And so the question is like, if you had a decision memo, clearly there's that one thing that we would change, which is to have whatever the plaque is be not something that you walk over that is so memorable.
You all noticed how that occurred. So that, so the, was a function of the owner of the building at that time, not the current, but said enough markers, enough things on the wall. And my understanding, there was some ADA issues with putting on a light post. It was, it was sort of a lot of round and round and round and round. And the termination discussion was from the Historic Resource Committee said, well, this is where we can put it.
Well, so could the city and its right-of-way somewhere near there, doing things quickly, do something different? And I think the second thing is what Dr. Bellamy is talking about, which is, but then the issue is it just gets into such a bigger kettle of fish, which is commissioning, but it could be, the difference between this and all the other things we've talked about with statues and statuary and so on, is this, we know that we want to do something nuanced, defined. Blue Ribbon Commission already worked on it. It's one thing that's inadequate, and it's more properly narrowly scoped than like, let's do a new statue to deal with the Soccageway or whatever. I mean, that's a good idea, but that can be really broad. This we know. So I think it can be pretty promising to get back, but not at one o'clock in the morning, but a pretty scoped, maybe it's that you include a work session for 20 minutes that has some documentation in a council meeting coming up. And it's like, you look at two or three options, and if, and we could come up with a concept pretty well, and then it's like you just...
A concept for the monument or for just a plaque?
For, I'm talking about for, if it's, if it's some, probably not a statue, but a mon, I don't know. It's too late.
It's okay.
But you could reach out in between there on to with...
Yeah, it's sort of that direction from...
A plaque is one thing, if it's something, any even...
And the EJI memorial plaque, the marker, has its own specs. And that's going to go up, and that can actually inform us as to what the other plaque might do and be designed as. But Dr. Douglas would be able to already know both. And she would, Dr. Douglas is very much the best one to talk about that.
So at least, so advising us on the difference between just doing a plaque and doing something more is with Dr.?
Yes.
Okay, great. But at the very least, we know that we're going to do something. We're going to do something on the city right of way.
And if I can just offer, I, you know, and I've been going through the Blue Ribbon Commission a lot, their reports, you know, first was the parks and the statues. We know where the situation is with that. Court Square Slave Auction Block, discussing that now. Daughters of Zion Cemetery, you all know that a lot's been done on that. That's been recognized. The Vinegar Hill community, we're working on that right now. Two of the things they talked about linking historic places and, you know, bridge builders were working on that with West Main Street. They talked about doing more resource surveys of traditionally African-American neighborhoods. 2017, we did Star Hill. 2018, we did Rose Hill. We are, I have, hopefully, we'll get a grant to do 10th and Page. And we're working with the Rose Hill folks to get the Burleigh School nominated for National...
I'm really glad you're bringing this up.
There's lots happening.
What I think...
And we're meeting with Mr. Holland Singh.
Yeah, Jibby's great. He is fantastic.
Just to, I think it'd be so great, and Dr. Richardson, we've talked about, and Mr. Wheeler's done such a good job with amping up our communications, the public knows what we're doing because there's so much going on. It would be so nice to have a one-stop shop where people could see all the different work that has been done in one place about the Blue Ribbon Commission recommendations, because that was a huge public engagement. There was 17 public hearings over six months, and thousands of people are engaged. And to let the public know what has been done in one place could be very, very valuable, as opposed to having it be interspersed among a bunch of tweets and news stories.
And, you know, a lot, it's a function of time and resources, and it's a tremendous amount going on. I was asked the other day about when are we going to edit all of the various things that are on the Historic Resources Committee's website? My response, Brian actually had asked me about it, I said, Brian, unless you've got another me, the best thing I can offer is to take the content down. Because in other words, to take a step back and go through all of those documents. There's a tremendous amount to be done, and we're, the committee is doing as much as they can. This is just one piece of the five things that I do in NDS. So I hear you, and I want to do, and it's not a, it's not a lack of enthusiasm or desire on anyone's part. But I think I, you know, maybe a discussion that's not at one o'clock in the morning and sort of lay out the resources and some of the prioritizations, so we can kind of make sure that we are proceeding with what you would like. Because there's a lot happening. There really is.
So, Mr. Wheeler, could you create something to release to just update? If that is a...
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was out of the room during the first part of that conversation. It was interesting.
Just to update the Blue Ribbon Commission recommendations on what has been done thus far.
Just like a fact sheet.
Yeah. Share it with the public.
And then, so the date that we want this conversation to come back? Second meeting, September?
That could be CRB return, just thinking ahead.
But it would be a discussion with, do you think that's enough time?
You know, just, again, I'll say, Historic Resources Committee, it's a group. It's a group of, it's very diverse, some really incredible people. We don't reach decisions easily. We have a lot of discussion about the characterization of the history that we're dealing with is very important, and getting it right and saying it right. In fact, we had a discussion earlier this year about how, you know, the, and it kind of sunk into the group, that the world's looking at us and what are we going to do with what's been presented here? How are we reacting to what happened? But we're...
Three months?
I look at it because it's, I wish, I'd love it. It's...
Just to have a discussion and...
I think, oh, I could, I could come back next month and have a discussion. I think as far as...
With Dr. Douglas and...
And I've talked to Andrea about, you know, and they've got the thing, you know, they've got a lot going on over there. But what you really want to hear is what are we doing with the slave auction block as far as bringing it to the surface? What are our options? What's available to us? And anytime we have to...
In light of the Blue Ribbon Commission...
Yeah, yeah. And anytime we have to write something, that's going to take some time.
So how much time?
To actually have an output or a plan?
Yeah.
Just to give us some options?
Oh, my gosh. That's, we can probably, when's our next meeting? Next Friday, right?
I know I'm not here for it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, let's say August...
Well, you're not coming in front of us in August.
Sorry, I'm not thinking.
Can't imagine.
Like I said, I'm tired with you all.
September.
Let me get back with Brian, and, but I'd say, yeah, a month or two, no doubt.
Okay.
Give you a summary. And...
And Councilor Bellamy, if you want to participate in those discussions, just remember to...
That's right, that's right. I heard him say yes, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
All right, y'all. Well, have a good evening.
All right, next we have the Charlottesville City Schools allocation.
Jury resolution? Forgot about that. What do we have for that?
You want me to...
See it up?
Mayor Walker, at the beginning of the meeting, added on an additional item to the agenda with the concurrence of the council. And the item that you'll be discussing right now is allocating $468, $68,000 to the Charlottesville City Schools. I have a resolution that I can read, but Dr. Richardson, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you stated correctly. The $468,000 will be appropriated to the school district for their gifted program for the hiring of teachers.
And I'll just, just add a little bit of context, where probably the last month, we've been talking, maybe a month, maybe not quite a month, but with...
He probably has been for several weeks.
Has it been? With Dr. Atkins, a couple of school board members about their attempt to change the Quest program in its current form and to make it more equitable. And their desire is to start a push-in model versus the current pull-out model, where only a select group of students, they want to have gifted teachers in every classroom, providing enrichment to all students. And we have had conversations for weeks, all of council, regarding our, while our commitment to equity, the fact that there were some, you know, parts of this program that we weren't sure about, you know, how it was going to work, we, you know, the amount of information that we desired, we didn't get. But ultimately, we decided that the, with knowing that the current program isn't working and that the schools, you know, want to try this model out, which is happening in other locations across the country, that we were willing to give it, give it a go. And we plan, I think, to ask for maybe an update in mid-year, just to see where they are, how the schools think the program is going. And on the next council agenda, there will be more information for the public. We do apologize for the fact that there isn't full information, but they need to get the staff members hired to start when school starts in August. And I know there have been some questions about whether that is even possible. And so we know a delay in the time would prevent that.
And there's some funding coming from their budget, and then there's some funding coming from two sources of council's budget.
They had originally asked for a total allocation of $620,000 for eight teachers that would go into elementary, Walker and Buford. Per their report, CHS has enough gifted teachers to implement the program there. And so we would fund six of those positions, and they'll be, they found the resources to fund two. And so our resources are coming from the Equity Fund and this, and the Council Discretionary Fund?
Well, to be clear, two-thirds are coming from the council fund, and then one-third will be coming from the Equity Fund.
I thought it wasn't the council fund, it was...
It's the citywide reserve.
I'm sorry. It was a citywide reserve that was stored for the anniversary of August 12. And those dollars amount are just for...
I think it's $400 and...
Yeah, $312,000 coming...
Yeah, $312,000 coming from the citywide reserve fund, and $156,000 from the council strategic initiatives fund.
And the school board discussed this at their last meeting, their plan and intention, and what they hope would be, you know, the outcome for that. So, that's also another source of information, even though we'll make sure that there's more information added to this. It'll be on the consent agenda, but to this for the next council meeting, and first meeting in August.
Wait, Dr. Richardson, you said the 156 was from the Equity Fund, because we have two different, we have a strategic initiatives fund, and then we have an equity fund. They're different, though.
And that's what I was asking earlier, but it sounds like they're all under one umbrella, and they get earmarked.
They're all under the same... They're all under the council strategic initiative.
Okay, understood.
But they're split out within that.
Yeah, that's what I was confused about earlier.
Sounds good.
All right, so...
I'm really glad that we're taking this step, just for...
Oh, you're talking solid.
No, I'm just saying, I'm really glad we're taking this step.
This will be on the consent agenda.
Just for the consent agenda.
I think this is gonna, well, if I can make my point.
Sorry.
I just think that this is going to really provide a great deal of equity within the schools, specifically exposing kids who don't normally have the opportunity to take advantage of Quest to now be able to do so. What'd you say?
Here, here.
No, we voted on those right after. Okay.
Easy.
And the other point that I just wanted to make...
You can add as much as you want when you're on council.
To make sure, before we go, is there any other business?
No.
Okay. And the floating holiday is effective starting yesterday, right? Just July 1st?
Yeah, it is.
Correct, yeah. Okay, so just wanted to make sure employees know, know that. Is there anyone, so we're at our last matters by the public. Is there anyone who would wish to speak?
No.
Quickly, I'm Elliot Harding from Charlottesville about the floating holiday. I think y'all need to make Election Day the holiday. It's something that I think the state needs to take. I think it's something that the federal government needs to take. I think it's something that Charlottesville needs to take a stand on, given the history of independence and liberty and what we stand for to our country. So, if you're going to pick a floating holiday, it should be Election Day. If it's not Election Day, it should be Juneteenth. I know that we did Freedom and Liberation Day, but Juneteenth, the festival, the experience over at Jefferson School was awesome. It's something that we should just go ahead and mark it as Juneteenth. So, those are the two suggestions. But from a citywide component, make it a, make it a holiday. Why not? Right? I mean, let's send a signal. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Sure Molly is not a tweeting?
I got two more, no.
We'll be back in August.
Happy five-week song.